Members, that will take us to item number 36 for a discussion on item number 36. And I'll ask the city clerk to come up and talk to us.
Hello, Mayor and Councilwoman Myrna, in the Clerk's office. With me is Caroline Webster with the Law Department. And we're here to respond to any of the questions you have on the council procedures.
Councilmembers, I knew there were some questions on this, so that's why I went ahead and pulled it. Councilmember Kelly, I'll recognize you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Myrna and Caroline, for being here. So when I was reviewing Toma, it became pretty apparent to me that there's really no difference between what kind of meeting or agenda item the public's entitled to speak on. If you look at Section 551.007, it says, "A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting." It goes on and on and on. I'm just concerned that our proposed rules could violate this section of that act specifically when it comes to briefings. And so I was hoping maybe legal could talk to us more about that, and hopefully it doesn't. I'm just concerned because the Texas Open Meetings Act, at least from what I've read, doesn't distinguish which agenda items people can speak on or not on.
It does not, but I'll recognize the city attorney.
Thank you.
The way the Open Meetings Act operates is we're required to let the public speak on items when the council is taking in action. If there's just a conversation at the work session, the council is not required to allow the public to speak on that. There's been a lot of conversation within the Texas Municipal League, other cities around the state, and that's the interpretation we have, and we're comfortable with that.
Okay, so it's only when the council's taking action that we are required to allow the public to speak. Perfect. That answers my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Allison Alter, then Councilmember Fuentes.
I have several, so maybe I'll ask a couple, and then...
I'm sorry, say that again.
I have several, so maybe I'll ask a couple, and then other people can ask. So I had some clarifications that I wanted, because, for instance, we don't meet every Thursday. I know we, at some point, take a vote that we're canceling those other meetings, but it just still seems odd to say that we're going to meet every Thursday by our rules and then cancel them. I just wanted to understand that.
One suggestion that had been made with regard to that, because that had been flagged, would be that we amend that so that it says that the council will establish a calendar. And that way, we could establish a calendar, and it wouldn't say you had to do it every week, and then have to back off exactly the way you suggested. So that would probably solve that, because then you could amend the calendar as you go along, if need be, like we've recently done.
Thank you, and I think it's still good to say that our general meeting date is Thursday, but I think that would help. And then, I understand the desire to try to limit our briefings to two. But I'm wondering, so that's in Section G of that Thursday council meeting section. It says, "Not more than two briefings may be placed on a council meeting agenda." Is that different than the work session? I think I'm getting a little confused across the agenda for the council meeting and the work session as this is laid out.
Right. No. It's always been, historically, it's always been two. There are always exceptions. I know that when I worked as the Agenda Manager, it was always two, but there were times where we required three or up to four, either on a council work session day and additionally on a council meeting day. So that is just in writing. It's not set in stone. There are exceptions. It would be up to the city manager and the council members, depending on how busy or how, excuse me, big the agenda is for that day.
So does G apply to work session and the council meeting day?
Both.
Okay. So that concerns me, because we do executive session. Those seem to be briefings, too. They're just an executive session, so we're kind of violating that all the time. I understand that we'd like that to be our goal, but I'm uncomfortable with having stuff in there that we know that we're regularly violating, but I agree that there's a need for a goal there. And then, it says, "A council member may place an item on a work session agenda for the purpose of discussion and identifying three other council members who wish to place the item directly on a council agenda," or "Discussion identifying three other council members who wish to open the item for public comment at a council meeting." I had understood that the practice was that you needed a second to place something on the work session agenda, and it seems to be that one person can.
I'm happy to address that. I actually think this is a part of the rules that we could change, because the council hasn't been following this exactly. And so it is a policy discussion about what you want to do, but this language is not... A lot of this, a good bit of this language has been not followed since the pandemic. So I think this is a great time, and I appreciate the clerk raising this as an issue to clarify, and you all could make some changes, if you'd like, to that.
Okay. So I raised that issue. I don't know what the process is for fixing this for Thursday. I have felt, over the last period, that as we've come out of COVID, that we're not necessarily giving the community enough time to speak to us in an organized way. We used to allow for donated time. That was valuable for us, to allow people to provide us with a presentation that was long enough to actually communicate, really, the concerns in a particular way. I don't know if folks share that concern. I also am uncomfortable with the notion that an item may not exceed 90 minutes. Not sure that we want to limit debate if there are that many people who are there. I don't think we've done that in the past. And again, I'm just reacting to what was on the paper. I know that none of my colleagues necessarily put this forward, but those are concerns that I have. I realize that since COVID, we haven't necessarily allowed for the donating time, and we had done that because it was hard to do with the online speaking. And I think it might be that you only get donating time if you're the person donating and you are in the chambers itself. I don't know if that would be possible, but I think that... I find that the public communication is valuable, and I'm not sure that with the time limits that we've gone to, et cetera, that we're really providing those opportunities for comment in the way that we should. And I'll leave it for that for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Allison Alter. I also had similar sentiments. I think that there are a lot of changes that were made because of the pandemic, and some of the changes were incredible. We are now able to offer testimony via phone, and that has increased participation, especially for folks who live on the outer edges of our city. So I appreciate the additions that were made. But I think some of the proposals that are laid out before us today to update our rules need a little bit more consideration. So would like to pose to my colleagues if folks would be amenable to a postponement of this item to the following week, June 8th, so that we can have more conversations amongst each other on these rules. For our city clerk, Rios, did council members weigh in on these changes that you proposed here, or can you share how you came to these proposals?
Sure. During my evaluation, I presented them to all of you and also sent you a copy for review. The purpose for us bringing these forward are just that, the pandemic. We are now meeting in a hybrid setting, and we still have the old rules from the pre-pandemic. And so our office receives a lot of inquiries regarding speaker registration, and I don't have a document that I can reference and say, "These are the rules." And so basically, it is practice that I have to defer to. And I don't see that we'll ever go back to all in person, so I made it, now that we have new management, I requested if we can revisit these and get them up to date, specifically with regard to public comment, because that affects our office. And so that's where we're at. But with regard to public comment and being in a hybrid version, I mean, a setting, it's very difficult with remote speakers to allow donation of time. It's possible to do it. The vendor is able to do it, but that would require for us to create a batch for every single number. And as you can see, we already have four staff members here managing that process during a council meeting. And so, and the technology, you see that we have people hang up or lose connection, so it would just be very difficult to manage. And that's why we are requesting that not change. That's what I have for now.
Oh, thank you for that. And I know you mentioned this before, but the red line version of the changes, the proposals that are in the red line version, those are your recommendations.
Correct.
You didn't have council, like you didn't have council members working with you to...
No, I provided those, and there were several questions from some council offices that were, we responded to, and it was fine. It had to do with the shell and the calendar, the meeting dates, or meeting every week. And the explanation for that is that there is a charter provision that states that we follow. And so we have, the council approves a yearly calendar, and there is a column, which I also attached to the email for your review, that states they are canceled meetings. So that addresses the charter piece, so that we are compliant.
And the rationale, right now, for a resident to sign up for the noon general comment period, that timeline used to be one week in advance, and now I think it's proposed at two weeks in advance. Can you share more about that proposal?
As far as, I mean, as I can remember, it's been 14 days for someone to register for the noon public communication portion on the agenda. It's on a first-come, first-served. One thing that did change in 2017, the last time these procedures were revised, are that if someone speaks during a noon public communication, they have to sit out for the three additional meetings before they can speak again, because we used to have the same people register to speak and always able to speak. So we wanted to allow others to, an opportunity to speak on any topic of their choice during this period. So that is what changed. But it's 14 days in advance, on a first-come, first-served basis.
Okay. Yeah, and I know, I mean, the reason why we're going over the details, because this is a very important part of our democratic process, setting the rules for how our community engages and how they are able to participate and provide input. So, colleagues, if anyone else is... Or I should ask our city clerk, is there any impact, any consequence to us delaying this to the following week to give us more time to review and have conversations with you about it?
No, no. We've been waiting a few years, so I don't think another week will...
For that matter, if we need more time, you could even wait beyond that, because we're not going to have any meetings after this meeting for some time. So there's not a rush in that regard. Because we don't vote at this work session, what I would suggest is that if there's going to be an effort to postpone, that we allow for that at the regular scheduled meeting, and we'll look forward to that, the way we pull things off the agenda and have motions, and it might even be on the consent agenda as a postponement to a date certain. In that regard, I would also suggest that one of the things that might be helpful with regard to how we move forward on that is if people have questions or thoughts about specific items in the green line version that we actually have. In the red line version that we have is to make those comments on the message board, because that will allow us to comment back and forth, if any of us have a comment back and forth. But it will also allow the clerk to maybe be able to clarify why there's thought behind something that she made us suggest to change on. But if there's a desire to postpone, we'll just take that up at the council meeting.
And also, I did some research this weekend, and so it dates back to 2011. I pulled all of those links. I'm happy to send that information to you, so that you have the history behind it and how it went from code and pull to a standalone procedures document. And all the conversations and meetings that were had, presentations.
Great. Does anybody else want to comment on this at this point in time? Have any more questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate what you're doing, and we'll look forward to the next steps in this. Item number 45, I'll recognize Councilmember Ryan Alter, and then whoever is staff that's going to be available for us to have this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I am bringing this resolution, pulled it to give a little both context, but also make you aware of an amendment that will be coming on Thursday. Just some background on this. There are a few projects that are permanent supportive housing projects related to finding home ATX that are partnering with Housing Authority of Travis County in order to provide those units here in town. We have to provide this, technically, it's a waiver. We have to let them operate within the city limits, and so that's what this resolution does. We have also been contacted by Development, Councilmember Fuentes's district, as well as a couple in Councilmember Velazquez's district, that also provide some great affordable housing opportunities. And so we plan to add those to this on Thursday, and I think some conversations are also being had about potentially some others, but should that happen, I'll be sure to make everybody aware on the message board and disseminate the changes as quickly as I can. So that is really that, unless anybody has any questions.
Councilmember Poole.
Thanks, Mayor. I've had a number of conversations with members of the housing community and our staff, and so there were a number of questions that arose in reading the IFC that's item 45. So I have several questions. They'll be answered in the Q and A probably tomorrow, and I'd like to hear from staff about the projects listed in the resolution. First, I want to share my concerns over several critical issues. So let me go through these, and then we'll have staff speak to the proposals. So the first concern for me is process. Housing projects seeking city subsidy and council support go through a vetting process, a due diligence with our housing staff. This ensures that council priorities are being met, along with firm commitments to affordability levels. That process is not happening here, which concerns me, and I need to understand why. Second is the use of the Public Facilities Corporation tool. That's the PFCs that you'll see listed. They may be used to structure these projects. We do not yet have an established policy around what justifies city subsidies and tax breaks for these PFCs within the city limits. That also concerns me. The request for city funds is a relatively new development, and it seems to be considerable and potentially endless, and so I'd like to stress a few points. Moving forward, it is critical that staff develop a proper set of criteria and process for approving PFC projects and establishing criteria for outside public housing authorities that are operating within our jurisdiction. We do not currently have that. And I will say, as a side note, I think that conversations about this have been going on in the community for a couple of years, but I don't think our staff was actually brought into the conversation until relatively recently, and I don't think the DIAS has been brought into it at all, except for maybe a couple of exceptions. The criteria should assess the affordability levels provided, the longevity of affordability provided, the nondiscrimination and tenant protections provided, processes for monitoring compliance that are included, and alignment with the goals of the Austin Strategic Housing Blueprint. That was mentioned earlier today, how important that blueprint is. Generally, if projects are located within the city of Austin and receiving benefits from us, we should hold them to our standards of, or affordability levels and the number of units across the projects. I understand the three projects named in item 45 are proposing to provide permanent supportive housing, but there may also be subsidies extended for market rate portions of the projects. So this is where proper staff vetting is so important, and it's missing. I'm also concerned about what may be high closing and annual fees. If we are subsidizing a project and offering tax benefits, I'd like to make sure, and I think the DIAS would agree, that we all need to be sure those dollars are being spent for actual affordable units. And finally, I'm working on an amendment that would direct the city manager to develop that necessary criteria that holds these projects to our standards. I'll post that to the message board as soon as it's ready. So I'd like to ask our housing staff now to help us understand the regular process of review, the one that they are involved in, and what we gain from that process. And as a part of those responses, please, staff, help us understand if there is anything preventing the three projects listed in the resolution from going through the city staff review now. Thank you.
Good morning. Rosie Trulove, Director of the Housing Department. Deputy Director Mandy DeMayo is here with me, and we're happy to answer some of the questions here, and we will be working on a full written response to the questions that have come from your office, hopefully by tomorrow morning at the latest. We are in the early stages of developing a process with our partners at the Housing Authority of Travis County and the Housing Authority for the City of Austin to ensure that we do have a good mechanism to properly vet the projects that are coming forward. In this particular case, these projects are in the process of working with HATSE, the Housing Authority of Travis County, and they do require formal action by the city council to allow those projects to happen within the Housing Authority of the City of Austin's jurisdiction. We were not brought into this conversation until the last week or two. There are a number of other projects that Councilmember Ryan Alter just brought up that he's potentially looking to amend and add. We don't know exactly what those projects even are. So there's a lot of conversations that are happening that were not being brought into. We very much value the opportunity to look at these particular developments, to ensure that we are getting the community benefit that we think is appropriate for removing these projects off the tax rolls. I'm going to allow Mandy DeMayo to give some additional information and to perhaps talk about the challenges of the PFC process and where we're at with state legislation on that.
Mandy DeMayo, Deputy Director. So just to start with the three items that are currently being contemplated, item 45, the three properties, those are all part of the Travis County Collaborative. And as Rosie mentioned, the Travis County Collaborative is a collaboration that involves seven nonprofit organizations. They have worked closely with Travis County and the Travis County Commissioners Court in order to create a structure whereby mixed-income housing could potentially offset the cost of supporting permanent supportive housing across these, it's actually six different sites right now. Travis County has committed to $50 million in ARPA funds to make these projects a reality. You all, as Austin Housing Finance Corporation, have also committed a variety of funds to these seven different projects, including $4 million to the Urban League, $3.4 million to family elder care, $6 million to a safe, 60-unit safe alliance project. And then you have on Thursday's agenda, two additional projects that are part of the collaborative, one with LifeWorks for $8 million, and another one for a little over $6 million with Caritas. The normal process would have been, should have been, had these projects not come to us piecemeal, that you all, as the city council, would have been brought into the conversations around the structure of the Travis County Collaborative and the various funding sources. Again, that did not happen. We only recently learned about the PFC structure that was being utilized, a subsidiary of Housing Authority of Travis County, or HATSE, to provide the tax exemption. In this very limited circumstance, we met with Councilmember Ryan Alter's staff members, and because this has been in the works for a couple of years, and because these are very needed permanent supportive housing units, we, as staff, are supportive of those three projects moving forward. However, as Councilmember Ryan Alter mentioned, we are learning every day, new projects that are coming down the pike. A lot of these projects are on a fast track because of pending PFC legislation at the state legislature. You all may know that there have been enormous abuses of the PFC loophole across the state of Texas. The legislature has reined that in, in current legislation, HB 2071. We are actually supportive of that legislation, and we are waiting for that to go into effect. It will, in fact, require, should a PFC structure go forward, deeper affordability. Right now, the affordability levels are 50% at, 50% of the units, at 80% are below median family income. And some of the projects that Councilmember Ryan Alter mentioned, two of them, we have, a week ago Monday, we learned of them, and we have had an opportunity to very quickly vet and review, and we have enormous concerns about those projects. The 80% units, based on our analysis, are actually higher, in some cases, than market rate at nearby new Class A properties. In addition, one of the properties does have, because of affordability unlocked, no, because of VMU 2, the Vertical Mixed Use 2, it does have 15% of the units at 60% or below median family income, which presumably would enable it to fit into the new PFC legislation. But I will note that that 15% at 60% or below is in exchange for already increased entitlements under the VMU 2. So this isn't necessarily above and beyond what would be required anyway. We have a wide range of concerns that we honestly have not had the opportunity to vet. As Rosie mentioned, we've had a preliminary meeting with HACA, Housing Authority of the City of Austin, HATSE, Housing Authority of Travis County, and us, AHFC, Austin Housing Finance Corporation, to lay out a roadmap. We're going to be meeting monthly, really talking about what our shared community values are and what our expectations are for affordable housing, certainly within the city of Austin's jurisdiction. Happy to answer more questions. As Rosie mentioned, we are digging into, Councilmember Poole had nine very specific questions. We've reached out to our third-party partners to try to gather some of that information, some of that information we have in-house. We plan to have full responses by tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much. I think it's really important to note that staff had not been included in the conversations about PFCs or the agreement for HATSE to work in collaboration with HACA. You can't collaborate if you haven't already had the conversation about how you're going to collaborate. So I appreciate staff saying that they are willing to allow the three projects that were in item 45 to go forward, but I would say that I think we really need to exercise specific diligence around those, even if they do pass. And also, I would very much like a briefing later, once there is some agreement with HATSE on what it looks like for the collaboration with the city via HACA.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmembers, when I was briefed on this item, I gathered that it was routine, and clearly it's not. Even the three that are on this resolution, if they open the floodgate to whatever that floodgate looks like, I think we owe it to the staff to go back and evaluate all this and put the framework together, so that all these worthy projects are considered under a certain process, which everybody can compete. So we understand the public commitment, plus the need to achieve the objectives of affordable housing. So I just would want the council to consider that, because even... So I just would want the council to consider that, because even, we said the three, and then we found out that there's a bunch of others. I just think we need to probably take a step back and really understand how all these pieces fit together.
And I would just say to that city manager, I agree with you, and I also don't like being put in a position where we might provide a different measuring stick for three projects and then a more, a stricter one or a different one for any other coming forward. It really does feel a bit of favoritism, and that concerns me. So I appreciate what you're saying about reviewing all of them.
And I think very much our goal on the staff side is to be able to have the opportunity to review all these. We know we need all of the affordable housing we can get in Austin, Texas. We're not trying to put up roadblocks or be a burden or an administrative stop on anything. We just want the opportunity to ensure that what we're doing makes sense, that we're getting adequate levels of affordability and other considerations for the entitlements that are on the table. So I, one of the properties that I think your, Councilmember Alter was talking about, is one that we had in fact talked to the developer about, and they said that July was great and we could have plenty of time to evaluate, and then came back to learn that they needed it, you know, added to this particular item that's on the agenda today, which doesn't, ties staff's hands and doesn't give us the opportunity to really give it the consideration that it deserves.
Councilmember Ryan Alter.
So I'd like to address a few of the things that have been discussed here. First and foremost, I've been talking to my staff here. They said that they have been talking to you, so the representation that you're just finding out about these is a little disappointing to me because they did talk to you. So we can figure out why there's that disconnect, but I'm, that's just thing number one. Number two, as we talk about the landscape of PFCs, there was a new piece of legislation that was brought and passed, and it was passed by more than two-thirds of both bodies. And so as soon as it's signed by the governor, it will be in place. This is not a runaround to get in before September 1st. That piece of legislation and that law will be in place in a matter of weeks, and these will have to follow that. So this is not some, you know, rush to beat the clock. I also want to just give some context about what these projects actually are. So first and foremost, we have the three on the item. The county has invested a significant amount of money, as they have indicated, in these projects as part of the collaborative in Finding Home ATX, and so the county chose to work with the Housing Authority of Travis County. Perfectly, you know, their money, they can choose their partner. And they have, as part of this partnership, if they're going to continue to invest money in homeless and permanent supportive housing within the city limits, we need to be a good partner in return. We can't expect them to help us out in this endeavor that we have set ourselves on if we are going to hold up projects that they are trying to do something of a shared goal. So that's, that's as it relates to the three items that we have. For these other projects that are being discussed, they are not some market, I don't even know how, let me give you some numbers for one of them. The one that's in Councilmember Velazquez's district, it's 101 units. Of that 101 units, more than half of those are affordable. 20% of them are at 50% MFI. We almost never see that level of affordability. Another, almost 20% of them are at 60% MFI. So these, and then the rest that are affordable are at 80. That is more stringent than what the new law is going to require. The new law requires 10% at 60 and 40% at 80. So what we have are projects that are going above and beyond. As it relates to some of these other projects that we're discussing, we have, once again, a situation where more than 50% of the units are affordable, and of those, they're not just at 80%, but they average out to 62% or 65% in various regards. So these, once again, we can come up with a framework, and I think we should, for how the Housing Authority of the City of Austin approves these projects. But to sit here and say that projects that are more than 50% of the units are at around 60% MFI, that we as a council don't want to allow those projects to go forward, I think that's, I wholly disagree. If this is a priority of this council, of providing truly affordable housing, this is how we do it. And so I just want to emphasize that, once again, we're not rushing through things. I've met with some of these individuals, and if we can bring it to the 20th to get a decision, that's fine, but we have an entity that is, this process has taken so long that they risk going bankrupt if they can't move forward. And so we have hundreds of units that could be affordable that we could say yes to. And so that's what I'm trying to do, is give us that opportunity to say yes. And if we need to come up with future framework, I'm all for it. But I want to give a little context to what this item is all about.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ryan Alter. I appreciate your comments, and I'm right there with you in acknowledging the unique needs that we have as a city and why we should prioritize our affordable housing. I mentioned earlier that this city council approved a strategic housing blueprint of producing 60,000 affordable homes within 10 years. We are way behind that mark, and so we should not, we should definitely be looking at, if it's a process, a procedure, and within our city administration, we should definitely be taking a closer look at that process and what it entails. For the project in my district, I will say, we are working on a separate agreement to ensure that it is in compliance with the state law that was just passed. But again, what was laid out to me was that there was a misunderstanding at Travis County, and it was an administrative gap within the process. And so that is why we were wanting to see if we could add it into Councilmember Alter's resolution, but to ensure that we are doing all that we can with our compliance checks, with tenant protections, and ensuring the community benefits portion, we're going to do a separate agreement, or that's the conversation we're having now. So I know we, having a separate agreement might not be the preferred route, but, you know, again, under the lens of trying to expedite affordable housing for the residents of Austin in light of the housing crisis that we're in, is the objective that I have. Thank you.
And Councilmember, both Councilmember Alter and Councilmember Fuentes, I don't think, really, our comments are not to say we don't want to achieve the goals of the council on affordability. The way I found out about these extra projects was Friday. I ran into somebody in the hallway, and they told me that there was this issue, and I passed it along to the housing staff, saying, you know, there's folks that are out here talking to us, the members of council, about this item. And so it's not to say we don't want to do it, we just, we want a chance to study it so we know how it all fits together. And if there is a financing issue, that we've got to sit down with representatives and see what the real concern is, so that if that's something that needs to get done by the 8th of June, we maybe, perhaps do that. But again, when this item was on the agenda, I was, at least, and I know it's my fault, I should have, I should have drilled down to get the detail, because I was told it's a routine item. And just from hearing from the conversation right now, it's a little bit beyond, it's a little bit more than routine. Not meaning it won't get done, just means it needs some study.
And staff remains supportive of the three that are posted right now. It's adding the additional projects, and Councilmember Alter, you're absolutely correct, we have been talking to your team since you initially came up with the proposed posting of this item. It's the projects themselves and the developers themselves that we have not been in communication with until two weeks ago. And we just need additional time to be able to ensure that we're appropriately endorsing items that we should be endorsing.
And we don't know about.
Okay.
And I'm not sure we know about all the projects either that you mentioned, because there were some in Councilmember Velazquez's district that don't sound at all familiar to us.
Sure. Well, let's get together again. We'll go through every single one, and we can figure out if they meet what you want them to meet, and we'll let everybody know how that meeting goes.
Sounds good.
Councilmember Alter, and then I'll come to Councilmember Poole.
Thank you, and it would be helpful, city manager, if you can also make sure that we understand for Thursday, kind of what your recommendation is at this point, because I'm now confused over the three, because I thought you said that there was two of those three that you weren't sure of at one point in your comments. So, and now you're saying you're sure of all three, but maybe it was some of the extra ones, so if we can get some clarity. I may have misunderstood.
And we're happy to clarify in the Q and A that we're working on for Councilmember Poole.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing that I wanted to just say is that this sounds like a procedural step to make sure that we are proceeding with due diligence, and I want to, I just want to adamantly say that I'm very thrilled that Travis County has decided to devote considerable amount of resources to permanent supportive housing and for affordable housing within the confines of Austin. I think that's a relatively new setup, and so I think we have to go through the growing pains of figuring out how to do that and make that happen and to facilitate it, and we need to do that with due diligence. But I don't want this conversation, which is about doing our due diligence, to lose sight of the important and historic investments that they're making and how valuable these affordable housing projects are going to be for us in meeting our housing goals and meeting the needs of our community. And I think that our staff agree with that. I just want to make sure that in this conversation, if Travis County is watching, that they understand that we are, we do very much appreciate those investments.
Absolutely.
All right. We'll wind up with Councilmember Poole. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, and agree with, in all respects, specifically to what Councilmember Allison Alter was saying. This isn't about providing affordable housing in our community. We are all very strongly working in that direction. I'm concerned, and there's a, there's a project potentially in, there's a potential project in District 7. But when I hear that the rents that would be offered by projects through the PFCs end up being more expensive because they're essentially market rate than what is being provided elsewhere in the district, then I, then I have red flags. There's a significant amount of money at issue here. 50 million from Travis County and 26, 27 million, nearly.
27 million.
27 million from the City of Austin, and that's not small change. We want that money to go to providing deeply affordable units within the city of Austin. We need to make sure that they do. That's what the due diligence that I'm hoping to get from staff will provide. That's the assurances that I certainly need before voting on these things. As we always do, in all of our contract agreements, we want to be sure that they have been vetted completely and appropriately, and I thank staff for falling back and doing that work now so that we can see what we have for Thursday. And then all of this information should come to the entire dais. I know you'll be working certainly with the author of this IFC, but please know that every last one of us here needs to have all of that same information. We rely on you for that. Thank you, Mandy.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. That'll take us to item number 71. Councilmember Kelly, I'll recognize you as the person that pulled item 71.
Thank you. It's my understanding that item 71 was brought forward to amend our previous council action related to license plate readers, and as such, I have questions for staff if they're available.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is that for 71 or?
Item 71.
48. Okay, maybe I just wrote mine down wrong.
Yeah, 71, and then we'll go to 48.
Okay.
Because it was pulled on the dais.
Yeah, 48 is occupancy limits.
Right. Yes. Please ask your questions, Councilmember.
Thank you. And is that, that's Chief Greenwald, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much, Chief Greenwald. I know you've dedicated a lot of time to this discussion, and I think for some of our newer council members, it's really important to lay out the process related to an investigation and a timeline of when data might be used for license plate readers or related to license plate readers. Could you please explain perhaps kind of the timeline of how a typical investigation goes and at what point you would typically learn throughout an investigation to even access license plate reader data?
Absolutely, and thank you for calling us here to answer these questions. I want to make sure everybody has a good understanding of how these types of situations work and how these investigations unfold before we move forward. There are a number of different ways the investigation may unfold. Sometimes we have information about where a crime occurred and what license plate we're looking for immediately. Sometimes that comes days later, sometimes it might be weeks or months later. So the retention period really comes into play in those types of investigations where we don't find out for a week or two what license plate we're looking for, because we need to know where that vehicle is or where it has been in order to solve the crime. But also, I think what's important to realize specifically with the retention periods is we may know on day one what our suspect vehicle is, what the description is, what the license plate is, but in order to find the suspect, we have to have as much historical data as possible. So I brought together, I brought with me today three examples of cases that are real examples that happened here in Austin, Texas, that kind of talk about the difference between what a seven-day and a 30-day retention policy would give us as far as results. Keep in mind, these are just three off the top of our heads that we turned around in quick fashion. If we wanted to do a deeper dive, there would be dozens and dozens of these examples over the four years that we had the LPRs from 2016 to 2020, but these are just three quick examples. In 2016, there was a murder in East Austin. We got the license plate and description of the vehicle on day one. There was witnesses there that were able to give us the license plate of the vehicle. The investigators were able to use the license plate reader system to put that vehicle's license plate into the database and look historically at the information to see where that vehicle was. It was registered to an address in Cedar Creek, Texas, but the vehicle was not where it was registered to be on paper. We got information from that database that was in the two-to-three-week timeframe, so it would have been lost with a seven-day timeframe. We still had it because it was within 30 days, and we're able to go to that address, which happened to be the suspect's new girlfriend's house, and they were able to take that person into custody as he was loading up baggage in his luggage, because he was planning on fleeing the country. He would have been gone to Mexico had it not been for our retention policy at the time. If the same exact situation happened today with a seven-day period, that person would be gone, and it would be more difficult to bring him back across the border to face justice in that case. Again, in 2016, we had a serial rapist that was kidnapping women in North Austin and bringing them to Central Austin to rape them. He had four separate cases where he had kidnapped, robbed, and sexually assaulted various women. Again, very similarly, that specific investigation spanned across the whole year, several months, and we're able to find a vehicle description on one of the last cases where it happened on the exact day that we got the license plate information. We issued a warrant for his arrest, and we started the investigation on where that vehicle might be. And once again, we had to have data in order to find that suspect that was outside the seven-day period. We just don't know ahead of time if seven days is going to capture this data or if it's not going to capture the data. We also have a situation on a lot of our success stories that we gave in previous work sessions and previous public safety committees and commissions, where there was two individuals in 2019 that were trying to kidnap young girls at a bus stop, I think in the eight-to-10 age group. They were trying to kidnap the girls, to sexually assault them. One of the girls got away, gave a license plate. Again, that license plate was not where it was registered to be. Oftentimes criminals don't park the license, their vehicles in front of where they're registered to be. Oftentimes, they're no longer actually owned by the same people. It was only through the use of the license plate reader system that we were able to find that vehicle at the address of the other suspect whom we had not identified. We would not have found it if it weren't for the license plate reader system, which again, was outside the seven-day retention period proposed in this, in this resolution amendment. They gave a full confession, and if it were not for us finding them and stopping them, they were going to continue to find more people to sexually assault. I think it's important to kind of just put into context that it's the opinion or the recommendation of the Austin Police Department that we have a one-year retention period. We want as much historical data to find our suspects and provide justice to our victims as possible. When we went through this process last year, we were in a position of compromise, and we were told, it's not going to pass with a year. You can have 30 days or you can have nothing. We took 30 days because 30 days is better than nothing. We made that compromise last fall. So since that resolution passed in September, we have been diligently working with our community input sessions, with the OPO, to try to put, enforce... community input sessions with the OPO to try to put, enforce a policy that abides by that resolution, and we were expecting the City Council to abide by the resolution as well. We feel like 30 days is what the citizens of Austin deserve, we feel like 30 days is what our citizens need in order to solve the crimes that they have. If there's any questions or any confusion or misunderstanding about how the system works, we can do demonstrations, we can come back and answer any questions that people have, I just want to make sure that any decisions that are made by the council that impact the safety of our citizens are done fully educated on how the system works and, and not because of some sort of misunderstanding.
Thank you, I really appreciate that recap there. You had mentioned in your statement just now that it's the opinion that the Austin Police Department would like a one-year retention period. Before this came before council, could you let me know what the prior retention period was for this data?
It was one year.
Okay, thank you, and do you know what a nationwide average for police departments who have license plate readers might look like? Have you looked at other policies and seen what other cities have as their standard for data retention?
They're slowly moving from the longer retention periods to a 30-day system, 30 days seems to be the national standard, as a matter of fact, FLOC, the contract that we're asking council to approve on June 8th, has a 30-day standard policy that they, that they retain data for. The only way that they'll actually go around that 30-day period is if there's a local law ordinance mandating that it go past 30 days, so all of the customers that they have over 3,000 cities nationwide, several cities in Texas, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington, several other cities around the nation all have, that are using FLOC have 30 days.
Okay, and you did a plethora of community listening sessions and got a lot of community feedback according, in addition to that collaboration you did with the OPO's office. At any point, was it discussed about a seven-day retention policy in lieu of the 30 days, or was it just the 30 days?
Seven days never came up.
Okay, thank you. Council and colleagues, I feel very uncomfortable moving forward with an item for seven days of retention when we haven't had the same type of community engagement or feedback related to that specifically, and then also, I know that personally I have struggled since seeing this item on Friday with my ability to really communicate to the public about an item that would really directly impact the, the safety and well-being of people in the community, and I cannot in good faith connect to my constituents or people in the community to simply change direction to council or from council through a resolution related to a seven-day retention policy. That's not what the council moved forward with last year, and while I understand the concerns that some council members have, without giving it that same public feedback and communication process, I just don't feel comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmembers, I think the chief is exactly right in terms of the process that we've used, used last year, and then discussion to get it to 30 days, we compromised, but let me just indicate that with respect to, as I understand, the resolution and discussion is that seven days would be for a year, a pilot, if you will, and that even though that's not our recommendation, if we get a year's worth of data that shows how it works and what doesn't work, and as long as we can come back to the Austin City Council and say, this is where this, this seven-day period has, has fallen short, and here's how it's fallen short, and so that you then have the opportunity to, to provide the, the direction to move that to 30 days, we're, 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 as, as a matter of compromise, you know, even though it's against our recommendation, we understand that that might be the will of the council, and if it is, we will try to make it work, and then we'll be in, in good faith, bring you the information so that you, once you have that information, you can make additional changes to get us back to that 30-day period that we had previously agreed to.
Mayor Protem.
I appreciate that input, City Manager, on your ability to try to work with everything that we decide as a council. I, I might suggest that if we stay with, with 30 days, we might be able to tell better what we were able to catch within seven days, and whether a majority of the instances that the department is looking to solve were falling in that seven-day period, or if there were outliers that I'm afraid we would miss the information if we stop with seven, we won't have the data about would we have caught it on day eight, or 14, or, you know, 20, whatever that number would be. I, I appreciate this item coming to us, and I just remember how the conversation got started, which was a number of us sat down with the sexual assault detectives and the, the crime counselors for victim services, and one of the first things that was mentioned was just the ability to be able to catch the people who are repeat offenders, was kind of the low-hanging fruit that came out of that conversation, and that was a number of months ago. So my question will be, how did this conversation play out at the Public Safety, the Commission meeting? Was that recommended at 30 days, or was there some other alternative that was presented to them?
The Public Safety Commission that we did most recently listened to my explanation of the policy, how we incorporated ideas from the community input sessions, from the Office of Police Oversight and Joyce James Consulting, they had some follow-up questions, and then they unanimously agreed to recommend that we pass it with a 30 days, they never talked about a lower retention period. And, sorry to interrupt, but to your point, you make a very good point, after a year pilot program with seven days, we're going to be able to tell you what we didn't solve, but we won't really know the value of what we could have solved if it won't be, wouldn't be for the actual data being there.
Right, and I know we've been having this conversation with, you know, advocates on both sides of this issue, folks who really want to see the license plate readers reinstated, and folks who are very worried about how they might be used and what kind of data might be collected, and who has access to that information, and so I know this was a lengthy topic that we debated a couple months ago when we determined that 30 days was where we were going to lie, and so I think because we've had that conversation with the public for so long, I'm comfortable with staying with 30 days and happy to have those audits and, you know, routine reports given to us so that we can reevaluate that at a later point in time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Ryan Alter.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'll, I'll tell y'all, this has been one of, if not the, most difficult items and subjects, I haven't been here that long, but at the time I have been here, my concern, and the reason why I'm bringing this item, how, how we got here, is that I am concerned that if we don't make a change to the 30-day policy, we will have zero data because we will not have this program. And so if we want to be able to approve this contract and actually have this tool be available for police officers who I think, you know, to the chief's point, it's, it's a valuable tool, this is a way for us to get there, and there are always things we can do that would have led to catching, you know, additional perpetrators of crimes, right? If we had cameras at every corner throughout the city, we would catch more people than we do today, but there are civil liberty concerns, practical concerns, and so we have to figure out what's the right balance, and that's what I've tried to do here, is find a period of time where the tool will be useful, but also respect concerns throughout the public of this, and, and, and we can come back in a year and see how it has worked, how it hasn't worked, but that is how we have arrived here, and I want to thank the chief for answering all my questions, and, you know, to your credit and point, how we got here was exactly how council told you to get here, so y'all did not do anything wrong in the process, that was just how, you know, we are where we are, and so I want to be able for, you know, right now, as we all know, we have 300 vacancies within APD, and this is one way to help fill some of those gaps, and I know you will always, like you said, a year is, is what you're looking for, and, and I respect that, that's your job to want that. I just believe it's, it's our job to, to do the best we can, and I think this is the best we can.
I'm gonna call on Councilmember Kelly to close.
Thank you, yeah, I actually, and thank you, Councilmember Ryan Alter, for explaining, I guess, your perspective on this item and why you brought it forward. I'm just curious how you landed on seven days and what kind of rationale went into that.
Absolutely, absolutely. After I spoke with the chief, we were trying to figure out an amount of time based on certain just really anecdotal, how long does it take from either interviewing somebody, arresting somebody, or just to, to work the system, and, and one of the conversations we had was, you know, it could be 48 hours before you are able to even get somebody that, from, from the moment you learn about it to, to when you would potentially run the license plate, you know, it could be a, it's not an instantaneous deal, and so a week seemed to be capturing some of that time lag, you know, if we did 24 hours or 48 hours, that, that wouldn't quite be long enough, and, and so seven days was where we landed.
I understand that, I'm wondering, you know, is it, since it seems like we are in a place where we might be able to compromise again because of the new council coming in and different things being added to this, with what Assistant Chief Greenwald told us earlier in my first line of questioning, if perhaps the balance of the dais would be a little bit more than seven days, maybe we go halfway between zero and 30 days to 15 days, since Chief Greenwald mentioned that sometimes it could take up to two weeks to know to search for information, is that something maybe the author might be amenable to if I were to bring forward an amendment?
I can tell you that if you, if, if such an amendment was passed, it is my belief that the ultimate tool itself and the contract that we have to approve for it would not be approved.
Okay, well, I appreciate that input, and thank you for answering my questions. I still firmly believe that this is a tool that the community needs, and the more time that we have, the more data we will have in order to see if it is effective or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just, I could, you know, we, we, we had a lot of conversations over the last year-plus about this, and I know some of my colleagues really leaned into this to try to create a policy that would be a model policy, and, and I've heard some of those folks say that this would be a model policy, you know, our, our staff have also leaned in with the community. I have to agree with Councilmember Ellis, and going back to one of the initial conversations that launched some of the, the search to see if we could reinstate this, and also remembering what happened in '20 and how it was removed in the first place, you know, I, I would really encourage you to talk to some of our detectives and the folks working in the sex crimes unit before you vote on Thursday, and understand that they are short-staffed. This is a tool that helps them enormously with their job to address people who are committing sexual assault, who could go on to commit another sexual assault if they're not apprehended, they could go on to kidnap, these other things, we have put in an enormous amount of safeguards, and I think we need to, to try this. Now, I don't know where the year got landed on for the pilot either, you know, it seems to me that if this is a tool that's working, you ought to be able to look at it after three months and say something one way or, or another about how, how it's doing, you have some historical data, but I think we, we, there are reasons for things that we care about, that we're, we're asking for this data, some of the other issues are addressed, I think, in the other rules, and, and I think I, I'm gonna have a lot of trouble, you know, for these sexual assault victims in particular, and other victims, they need to have this tool, it's the tool that we need.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a...
Members of the public, we will finish today.
Just wanted to make a quick comment that there are numerous private license plate readers located across the city, in garages and all kinds of toll roads and all kinds of different locations, and the police can always, with a warrant, subpoena that information and pull any kind of data based on any license plate, and as far as I'm aware, the private companies have no timeline where they have to, you know, dispose of it or anything like that, so, a, a, again, there's multiple, I think, tools available to the police when conducting investigations, criminal investigations, you know, holding their own license plate reader data, obviously is a very, very powerful one, but given also the potential citywide expansion, you know, I, I think when we debated this last year, we were talking about, I think, a limited number of units, there were a limited number of vehicles that were equipped with it, and there were only a limited number of stationary units, now, given the contract and where we're going toward, essentially every APD unit is going to be a license plate reading vehicle, and the data that they're collecting is going to be very robust, which is fine, I, I, I completely understand that, I'm completely fine with it, but the reality is that the civil liberties implications, I think, become, become more serious when you're capturing, you know, just about every vehicle in the City of Austin and establishing essentially the whereabouts of every person in the City of Austin and putting it in a police database, which are, you know, I know the safeguards are there, I completely believe and, and know they're going to do their, their best to safeguard that, but as we've seen with, you know, national security databases, CIA databases, all of a sudden, you know, stuff gets out, and, and, and that kind of data is always abused too, so, so I just wanted to reiterate, especially the fact that there are numerous tools that the police also have access to in, in criminal investigations outside of just, you know, their own reserved and recorded data.
Thank you, Councilmember, anybody else want to be heard on this item? All right, we'll move to item number 48, I'll recognize Councilmember Allison Alter who pulled the item.
Thank you, and I apologize that I didn't get a chance with the holiday to pull it sooner. I understand the goal and the rationale for the item, I did want to get a sense, though, in practice, how it would work and what the differences were, so do you have a, like, an example in mind, Mr. Cadre, of, you know, you're, you're eliminating the occupancy limits, and then you're gonna operate under the property maintenance code rules that you're saying that's going to provide that safeguard, and I'm trying to understand what that means in practice a little bit better, and, and, and trying to understand how, how to think about that, because as I understood that the occupancy limits were put in place to address some particular challenges, I understand the rationale and the concern to open up more housing, but I, but I don't totally think in 70-square-feet limits, and, and trying to understand how that, how that plays out.
Councilmember Cadre.
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to staff, I think someone was gonna get up and say something. Thank you.
You heard the question?
I think I understand what the question is. Trish Link with the Law Department, Councilmember Alter, the property maintenance code standard of 70 square feet for a bedroom, or 120 plus 50 when you go above three adults, is the standard that we apply to every sleeping unit in the city. The 25-2-5-11, which is our dwelling unit occupancy limit, so I, I like to refer to it as our zoning occupancy limit, because it focuses on the number of unrelated adults. Our property maintenance code is strictly adults, while our, without qualifying whether they're related or not, and then the 25-2-5-11 is for unrelated. What that would mean is if council essentially repeals 25-2-5-11, you would be limited by the number of, based on your square footage of the bedrooms.
I, I understand that, I'm just trying to understand in practice, like, I don't think in square footage of bedrooms, the occupancy limits are very clear, and then when you start transitioning, I'm trying to understand in practice what that would mean for some given scenarios that we would see play out, because I know there's a long history for implementing these limits, there was a reason for implementing it, and I don't want us to move forward and have unintended consequences.
So I think in practice, the way I, so, Austin Code, now under DSD, enforces our dwelling unit occupancy limit and the property maintenance code, so in order for them to determine whether a violation exists, they will, without the zoning occupancy limits, so the unrelated number, they would be looking at the square footage and calculating how many adults could be sleeping in that room, so that's how you would determine the occupancy limit for that particular dwelling. So if you have two bedrooms and it will fit three adults, then you could have up to six adults living in that dwelling. Under the 25-2-5-11 standard, you could potentially have six adults if they are all related, if they are unrelated, that is where we do the limitations of... If they are unrelated, that is where we do the limitations of four, if you're within what is known as McMansion boundaries, and the property was constructed after March of 2014. Aside from that, it's generally six unrelated.
Thank you. Again, it would be really helpful, and I'll ask some questions in the Q and A to get some more specific kind of examples. The other question I had was, how does this impact short-term rental limits?
It does not. Currently, our only limitation on occupancy for short-term rentals is the property maintenance code. They were removed from 25-2-5-11 in 2015-16 timeframe. They, we had council adopted specific occupancy limits for short-term rentals, and those, unfortunately, were struck down by the Court of Appeals.
Okay, so this won't, that's really helpful. So this wouldn't change anything for short-term rentals? That's a question I've been getting. So this wouldn't affect that because those limits were already shot down?
They were, and they were already removed from 25-2-5-11. So we actually created short-term rental-specific occupancy limits in addition to the property maintenance code.
Okay, if we had occupancy limits, they would not apply, though. They couldn't apply to short-term rentals, as they were applying equally to everyone.
What we apply right now is the property maintenance code that everyone has to follow.
Okay, but that was not my question. My question was if, if we decided we had removed it from the occupancy limits, we have not explored whether we could have an occupancy limit and have it apply to short-term rentals?
We would need to have further conversation and analysis on that particular question.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to be doing some more research, and hopefully I'll have some additional questions on Thursday. And again, I want to just be clear, I truly understand the underlying concern of providing some more opportunities for housing, but I do think there's some unintended consequences that come from this that I want to make sure that we are thinking about. And I think going back and looking at the history of how we got here in the first place is important. Obviously, there have been consequences of that change as well that we want to look at, but I do have some concerns that I want to think through and talk about.
Councilmember Poole.
Maybe Ms. Link can come back up. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, one of them around the enforcement of occupancy levels. How's that been working?
The property maintenance code piece, it's very objective. Staff can just measure a room and say how many adults are here. When it comes to the 25-2-5-11 standard, they do have to determine whether or not individuals are related. And we will take individuals at face value when they tell us that they're related.
How many, how many investigations on occupancy levels have we had in the last year?
I would have to check with staff, but I can just say that generally speaking, if they can be hard to, essentially, we'd have to prove a negative, we have to prove that they're not related. And that's, we also have a very broad standard of what related is in our code, because we recognize domestic partnerships, and so it's challenging.
So we're actually looking at a situation in our code and in law where we have some restrictions that are difficult to identify, maybe even more difficult to enforce, and that may be one reason, I'm trying to articulate why we are bringing this change through this IFC.
That would be one advantage if we have just this single occupancy limit. It would be, it would be helpful for the public to know what that is, and that's something that they can even measure on their own. And then too, it's very objective as opposed to getting into the conversation about whether individuals are related.
So we might be on a better, brighter line legal landscape through these changes than we are currently?
I think we're, what we have on the books is lawful. However, I'm not sure from an enforcement standpoint that we necessarily get the biggest bang for the buck out of that limitation.
Okay, so it's the operational piece that really is what we're dealing with?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I appreciate this. Quite like my colleagues have stated earlier, I've done some extensive research related to this item too. I wanted to really understand how we got to where we are. And so I'm wondering, Trish, when you talk about 25-2-5-11, does that include our fire code standard in that part of the code?
No, Councilmember, that is strictly our zoning occupancy. So it is based on whether or not individuals are related. Our protection from a fire code standpoint or from our property maintenance code, those would still be intact, and those are in a different part of the land development code.
Could you please let me know what those are in regards to the fire code? I'm curious. It was my understanding that a lot of this conversation happened when Councilmember Martinez was around, and as we all know, he used to be a firefighter. And so I think the fire code definitely has a role in what we're discussing.
I, as a follow-up, I can do a response for questions and answers, and we'll actually check in with DSD and have them assist me with that.
Okay, if that could go to all of council, that would be great. I'm also curious, do we know how much staff time this currently takes or could take in order to enforce or not enforce?
I would need the Director of DSD to answer that question.
Okay, if you could just include that, I guess, in your answers back to council, that would be helpful. And then my final question is, have any studies been done to determine any sort of impacts related to repealing this ordinance? And my question is, I'm really concerned about unintended consequences, much like my colleagues who've spoken already.
Councilmember, could you repeat your question? I apologize.
Sorry, no, it's okay. Have any studies been done to determine the impact on repealing the ordinance?
Not that I am aware of. I will say, when it comes to 25-2-5-11, because it is a zoning regulation, we are required to give reasonable accommodations. We have to handle that a little bit differently because of the type of regulation that it is. Our property maintenance code, which is the 70-square-feet or the 120-plus-50-square-feet for more than three adults, is a standard that we follow, and we've, council adopted it several years ago, and it was consistent and was supported by a variety of stakeholders.
Okay, and then I guess one last question, sorry, everybody. That brings up the stakeholder process related to if this ordinance were to pass, if any stakeholder feedback would be included in that change, or if that's even a possibility?
So the resolution, as proposed, would direct the manager to move forward with the code amendment. As it goes to the Planning Commission and comes to council, there will be opportunity for the public to share their concerns about changing this occupancy limit.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Councilmember Codri.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to say thank you to my colleagues that have expressed their concerns. And I also want to thank the many folks who have called and emailed our offices, and might have emailed other folks' offices on this issue. I've said this before, I read every email, I read every mean tweet and nice tweet, so I've read it all. And I just want to say, you know, this is, and I just want to also reaffirm, this is just the initiation. There's going to be multiple public opportunities for folks to be heard as the code amendment works its way through boards and commissions. You know, the concerns everyone has are valid, but, you know, as it's been said and will be said, and I'm looking forward to the discussion on Thursday, you know, the city's going to continue to enforce the occupancy limits in the building code. And they're based on square footage per person, and they prevent health and safety issues related to overcrowding. And then the building code requirements that we have are aligned with federal guidelines for occupancy limits. So like I said, everyone's concerns are righteous and right and valid, but, you know, we, you know, and we're very welcome to hear them, but we hope to extinguish any concerns on Thursday.
Thank you, Councilmember. Members, is there anything else on this item? Is there anything else anyone would like to bring up at this work session? Been a good thorough work session? Thank you all. Without objection, we're adjourned. It is 1:07 PM.